The regular scheduled November council meeting order. Welcome all our visitors and citizens and everyone that's coming out and also everyone that's tuned in online. We'll start our normal fashion, open with our prayer followed by our pledge. Reverend Woods, would you lead us in prayer?
Our Father in heaven, we thank you again now for this blessed day. Thank you, oh God, for your blessing that you bestowed upon us. Even tonight, God, we pray now for your guidance, we pray for your Holy Spirit. And God, even the decisions we make tonight, let it be pleasing in your holy sight. This I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Let's play. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, if you would, uh, check in on the roll.
Mr. Crawford. Mr. Golden. Ms. Lao. Mr. McKinney. Ms. Ray. Ms. Spinks. Mr. Woods.
All right, we got one set of minutes to approve the October regular scheduled council meeting. Y'all have a copy of those minutes. If there are no changes or corrections, is there a motion to approve those minutes? Motion by Ms. Spinks, is there a second, second by Mr. Crawford? If you will, cash your votes. Motion, Kirk. All right, moving on to my report. First thing I have to do is got two people that has achieved, uh, national recognition and it's always exciting when we're in the news or our citizens or community leaders are in the news, uh, for great, good things. I'm gonna start with recognizing Ms. Henson, uh, if she would come forward, please. Mrs. Henson's nurse from the Bolivar, uh, Bolivar General Hospital, um, and she has been working there for more than twenty years. She's garnered the respect and trust of her team and confidence of her patients. Uh, the Tennessee Hospital Association was founded in nineteen thirty-eight and serves for advocate for hospitals, healthcare systems and other health co-organizations. And she was recognized by them and received the Tennessee Hospitals Association's, uh, top nurse, clinical nurse in the state at their annual twenty twenty-two meeting. And we're just so proud to say that you're one of ours and, uh, thank you so much for representing the city of Bolivar and West Tennessee Healthcare Bolivar General Hospital in such a great honor, uh, and great respect. So, thank you, we love you so much. Yeah, that's requested that you come up, Reverend Woods. This is just a little talking from the city. Thank you so much. Next, we have Ms. Sherri Hall, you will come down. Again, receiving na- national recognition, uh, communicate, uh, but shares community, communities in school, site coordinator at the Bolivar Central High School. And she received an award during a recent trip to Washington DC from the, for the National Conference of Communities in Schools, in which First Lady Dr. Jill Biden was there also receiving an award. And we're again proud of her. I've had the honor of working with her in the community in schools and she's, she's just a jewel. And she really takes the kids in Bolivar, uh, at heart, so thank you so much. I guess she, she wa- she helped raise me a little bit, so she knows, she's known me a while. So, we love her and keep doing the good work at the high school and we can't say thank you enough for what you do to represent Bolivar. All right, next on my report, I did you guys receive the invite, I think all was in all y'all packets, but a Blue Oval Community Meeting will be at the Louise Theater, uh, Thursday seventeenth at six PM. We've, uh, been meeting with them and back and forth and how communities can be prepared to take advantage of that. So, please tell the citizens, spread the word, Thursday, uh, six PM at the Louise Theater. We will have representatives before Ms. Mary Ann Donovan, she's the, uh, government relations, uh, representative for four. Uh, so they will be there and some of their representatives from Blue Oval City will be coming. So, uh, make sure we ever have everyone come out and attend that and show some support and let it be known that we want to take advantage of the opportunities with, uh, Blue Oval City here in Bolivar. Our city offices will be closed November the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth for Thanksgiving, the Thursday and Friday. Uh, and in December, and I know a couple of these other departments will probably be talking about it, but put on your schedule, December first at the theater will be, uh, Motown Review, Christmas Motown Review. December second, we have our city Christmas employee party. So, we'd love for you and your spouse or guests to come join us December second and you'll have a invite in your package and email to you for that. Uh, and then December third will be our Christmas parade. So, December third, if there's anybody who want to participate, commuters here, um, if you like to put out a float, we encourage you, uh, to come and participate in our parade on December third. All right, that's all on, uh, my report, let me check and make sure. Okay, moving on to standing committee reports, uh, for the electric department. The Bolivar Energy Authority met on October thirty-first in the regular meeting. Alexander Thompson Arnold presented the fiscal twenty-two, twenty twenty-two audit with no findings and the board accepted the, uh, audit. Blue Cross Blue Shield, uh, was renewed for insurance with the increase of six percent in premiums. Approval was given by the board to start the process of increasing the purchasing limit for the CEO. And this is to deal with the cost of crease, increasing cost of materials. And this concludes the VEA report. And also, they are still, uh, running fiber throughout the county, uh, so please tell everyone to support, uh, ANEAs and sign on and get those services through, uh, ANEAs and Bolivar Energy Authority. Next, utilities, Mr. Cliff Henson.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman. Uh, first of all, uh, we got our ARP, uh, application sent in to Southwest. We got it turned in on time, so we're waiting on word from the state to issue us our grant. Supposedly, we're, we're asking for two point eight million. Uh, we got a lot of stuff to be done in our infrastructure and this is gonna help out tremendously. So, as soon as we hear word, I'll pass that on as far as that. Um, we also applied for a FEMA grant. Uh, we should be hearing from that anytime in the next week or two. Uh, this is something they never gave us an opportunity to do, it's a gas grant. Uh, and our plans are to put in a whole new, uh, gas system behind the water treatment plant, which down Rogers Avenue, back in that area, that pipe was put in in nineteen seventy-two. It's plastic, it's outlived its lifetime, so this grant is basically for that, to change that gas pipe out, uh, to get some up-to-date stuff in there and also we're asking for a new directional boring machine. So, with that, it's gonna be a, a real asset to the, to the utility department. And, uh, the last thing here is our gas prices, good news on that, we got, uh, pretty good price this month. Dropped down to eighty-five cents, that's about, uh, a twenty percent decrease, so hopefully that'll continue.
Thank you, Mr. Cliff. Next is fire, standing there for Chief Price's assistant, Chief Galvin, you gotta be impressed with Chief Price, uh, this procedure surgery he had, uh, was it Monday? I think well, so be part of handling every single test, let's know if you're thinking about it.
Afternoon, Councilman. On our fire calls, we have a total of, uh, sixteen altogether. And on the structure side, we had, uh, zero for the city, but we had nine, four in the county. And, uh, also, we had, uh, vehicle fires, we had two city, zero in the county. And on the motor vehicle accidents, we had four and they was all in the city and zero on the county side. Fire alarms, we had five in the city and we had four in the county and others were just five. Uh, total training hours, we had two hundred and seventy-four hours. We installed twenty-three smoke alarms and we also, um, did twelve fire inspections. And we had, uh, eight public relationships events. And that's all we have here.
Thanks, Assistant Chief Galvin. I'll tell Chief Price you did a good job. Let's, uh, please, uh, Chief Jones.
Hello. My report is as follows, we've had five hundred and seventy-two calls of service, hundred thirty-five citations. Accidents, we had twenty-five accidents, seven were injury, eighteen of those were property damage. Thirty-one arrests, nine juveniles, twenty-two adults. And the special events we participated in was trunk or treat and also the barbecue blowout and we had a hundred and twenty-seven hours of training. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief Jones, let's go, Parks and Rec, Mr. Ford.
Mayor, Council. The Parks and Rec Department reports on the following. Our youth soccer ended on the twenty-seventh of last month. Uh, the season was a success, our kids received medals or awards for participation. Line dance exercise class for adults also continues on Tuesdays and Thursdays, five PM here at the gymnasium. The adult volleyball league has begun, first game was this past Thursday. We have four teams that are participating and that's a very exciting league. Six through ten year old co-ed, uh, youth basketball league has begun their registration and it will continue through December the eighth. Um, so we will also be partnering with the Junior Grizzlies again this year and we're looking forward to that. Also, we completed some repairs to the playground on Highway sixty-four at the park. Uh, there were several pieces that had deteriorated and we finally got those parts in and we did, uh, make the replacement and repairs. And also, I want to remind anyone that's interested in pickleball, uh, Monday, Wednesday and Fridays here in the gymnasium, nine AM till about eleven or noon, if you're interested in learning this, would like to play, come join us.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ford, they be serious about that pickleball, I will tell you. Be careful if you don't play with them. Streets of Sanitation, uh, Mr. Eddie Van Der.
Good afternoon. We're working on Christmas decorations downtown and, uh, picked up bulky out of last month and, and, uh, they are working on the landfill, they said that, I talked to one of the guys today, they said they've downed three violations out there and, uh, that attorneys are working out some localities, where you gonna call it? And, uh, maybe the state would be down and next month, two, let us open it back up or let them open it back up.
I know we'll be happy when that happens, that's been hauling trash a long time.
That two to three weeks was a long time.
All right, um, we have a library report, uh, Mr. Watkins, zoning and compliance.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. You should have a copy of my report, uh, had six building consultations, one building permit, uh, nine building inspections, nine plumbing inspections, eight mechanical and twenty-five courtesy notices. And the, um, fourplexes out on Poplar have been, we've done a CO on those, so they should be renting those pretty quickly if they haven't already. And then, uh, last report I have on the new subdivision, they're on hold right now and apartments are on hold for right now, so I don't.
Is he doing, but I know he got sick.
I don't know, I didn't know he was sick. I just know they put him on, put him on hold because of interest rates is what they did primarily, so. But that concludes my report.
Well, thank you, Mr. Watkins. EMS, uh, Bobby.
Since we hear, uh, month of October, two hundred and sixty total responses. Um, a hundred and thirty-nine were emergency calls and a hundred and twenty-one were non-emergency calls. Uh, we transported a hundred and ninety-eight of those. Um, uh, Bolivar General Hospital transfers, we transferred sixty-three out of county. Uh, sixty of those were to Jackson General and three of those were to Memphis. Uh, two hundred and twenty-two, uh, calls in the city limits of Bolivar. Uh, seven were mutual aid with Hardeman County. And, uh, thirteen calls were made in the city limits of Bolivar by other med center units from either Chester, McNairy or, or, uh, Madison County. So, another thing, the new, the new ambulance that I brought up here a couple of months ago, we finally got that in service last month, so you should be seeing it around town, the brand new one, six oh three. And we've got six oh two parked over there as a backup, just in case, so, yep.
Thank you. Uh, uh, next, uh, well, new, uh, appoint, Mr. Dillon Hill Tourism Community Development.
Good evening, Council. Might be easier on this side. Just to give you a little bit of an update, uh, I've been in office since the seventeenth of October. So, uh, in that time, we've held a meeting with, uh, Mr. Shane Connor of Faith and Family Events. We're gonna try to utilize the Louise, uh, in a few more ways than just movies. Um, we're gonna have, as the mayor said, uh, the Motown Christmas coming in on December first. That says December second there on your paper, I apologize for that, but it is Thursday, December first and tickets are online for purchase now. Um, so we, we expect a big crowd for that, we hope that that's a sell-out. The next event that he'll be putting on will be, um, around or on Valentine's Day. We're gonna kind of gauge interest after those two and we're hoping to do a monthly concert comedian. Uh, he has a lot of connections, if you check out, um, Williams Auditorium in Henderson, he, he manages that and he can bring in a lot of good acts for us. Um, I'm also overseeing the progress on what is gonna be the tourism hub and the coworking space in the old chamber building by KFC, soon to be titled The Timbers. And we're hopeful, uh, that I will be in that building, uh, by the first of the year. And then, uh, I leave tomorrow for the first economic development class that I'll be taking. Um, there are eight classes and it'll be over an eighteen-month span, so I'll be beginning that tomorrow.
All right. That's all the standing committee reports, we'll move on to old business. Uh, only thing we have on the old business is the approval request, to approval to request biz to start the new neighborhood building. Uh, if you guys remember, I thought we, I guess at the last month, we had, uh, Southwest Human Resource Agency has assigned a letter intent to join us in the neighborhood. And I've had three or four other nonprofits to do the, uh, same. So, looking to hopefully we have that building up and down by July, say by July one. Occupied by July one, maybe we can have a construction part done earlier than that. So, uh, what I would like, what I would like to do is just get a request to start the bidding process on that. Me and Ricky get together and put the bid plans together and we can bid it out over the next month and approve the bid, um, and I do something. All right, motion by Mr. Lao, second by Mr. Crawford, any discussion, question, anything? All right, if you would, cash your votes. Motion, Kirk. Next, we have, um, new business discussion involving all applicants to fill vacant West City Council position. You guys know, uh, Mr. Hill's position, we came back here when he became an employee with the city. So, we opened it up, uh, let me pass this around to you. This is, uh, how our charter states on us filling, let's see, filling the position. We, we're not required to open it up or take resumes and everything, we just, based on the charter, we just basically, we're required to just fill the position with an appointment, uh, with an approved person, basically somebody that lives there in the district. But, of course, we did open it up for resumes, see general interest, to see who would be interested in filling this seat. We had three applicants to, uh, turn their resumes in. And out of those three applicants, it was, um, Mr. Mike Brown, Chris Williams and who am I to lead on that? Randy, okay, and Randy Hill, I'm sorry, I'm, uh, Mr. Randy Hill. It wasn't required that they be here tonight, but I said if they came, that we would open up and allow those people to speak if they wanted to. So, if that's okay with everybody, I'll open it up and just see, I know Mr. Chris is here. Um, Mr. Randy did let me know that he, he had served with his arms, so he wasn't able to, uh, he wasn't able to come. But then we also have, um, Mr. Mike Brown that kind of in his resume too, so y'all should have received all those in your packet. All right, oh, everybody okay with Mr. Chris coming? All right, Mr. Wood.
I know most of you, a lot of familiar faces. My name is Chris Williams, I live in West Bolivar. I work in executive administration for the Memphis Police Department at headquarters. My wife Ashley and I own and operate Southern Express Pharmacy here in Bolivar and we attend First Baptist Church. I've been in public service most of my adult life, I'm two months shy of ten years in law enforcement. Um, I worked here in Bolivar and Hardeman County for several years before moving to Memphis. Um, my team assists the chief of police and other command staff members in city council meetings weekly. Um, I tend speaking engagements on behalf of the police department and I coordinate news interviews with various media outlets throughout Memphis and on a national level. My position has allowed me to maintain crucial relationships with our local, state and federal partners to ensure the revitalization of West Tennessee. I'm also a twenty twenty-three Tennessee Achieves Mentor through the State of Tennessee for Bolivar Central High School. Um, being a public servant most of my life, a local business owner and having a heart for service and giving back has led me to this moment. I've always had, uh, the ambition and the goal of working with you and running for this position and I was eager to announce my interest whenever I heard about this vacancy. I spoke with every council member in person or by phone because I think it's very important for you to know how serious we are whenever we turn in our resume and, uh, what our desires, goals are for this seat. Um, being a father myself, I think Bolivar is a wonderful place to raise a family and put down roots. I genuinely believe Bol- Bolivar's greatest asset is its people, I truly believe that. A few of my goals for Bolivar would be to give our young people more, more to do, uh, besides what they have available at this time. Continue growth, uh, growing our downtown area with new business, um, and revitalization of downtown. Uh, there's a lot of vacant buildings that, that we would love to see full. So, um, also invest in our infrastructure. I believe it's very important to, to maintain infrastructure that's gonna be good for years to come. Um, and maintain a responsible city budget that is beneficial to everyone regardless of which part of Bolivar that you live on. Uh, Ford is coming to West Tennessee, we have a lot of potential there, um, for business and for support services for, for that development. And that's gonna be huge for Bolivar, I believe, in Hardeman County. Um, and I just appreciate your consideration for this, uh, this appointment.
All right, I don't see any of the other applicants that was here that. Yes, ma'am, come.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elrie Greer-Harren and I am a, an educator at Fayette County, in Fayette County with Fayette Ware, um, Comprehensive High School. And I wanted to speak on behalf of Mr. Williams. Um, I had the privilege of meeting him about five years ago when I worked at the prison. Um, and during those five years, we've developed a friendship, um, that probably can't be matched. If I call on him, I met him, I had to call the police actually, and he responded from Bolivar, right, at the prison. We arrested somebody, but hey, that's no idea. Um, and he responded and from that moment, we instantly had, um, a bond with each other, not just because of our backgrounds in law enforcement, but because of the community. We both had focuses that we wanted to, um, or had different points that we wanted to focus on with the community that dealt with criminal justice, I'll say that. Um, after leaving the prison, we remained in contact with each other. He has been a speaker in my classroom, I teach criminal justice one, two and three. Um, he actually has contacted me to come back and speak, my students love him. Um, during that time of us knowing each other, I can attest that I can see that he's grown in his, uh, servant leadership role, um, with the community. Um, he's a family member, he's not just, um, a police officer or someone that's responding to you. He's responding to you as a person, not just your situation. And I think that's vitally important with this position because the citizens, we look to all of you to voice our opinions when we can't or to speak for us when we can't. And I feel that Mr. Williams would be an excellent candidate to fill that empty spot that you have. Um, I'll let his ability speak for him, but for now, I would just like to give my two cents. And thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin.
Yes, sir.
All right, was I in about it? All right, did we have any questions, Council?
Mayor, for the bad law, could you speak?
Sure, go ahead.
He has torn his labrum, uh, and can't put on a shirt and socks and let me promise you, you don't want him here. So, uh, but he, he is down. Um, you all know my dad, you all know that all that he has done for this community, uh, for the many, many years that he has been involved. Uh, he, he's not new to this place, this has been home for him, uh, for his entire life. And he has invested tenfold, um, more than anybody that, that I can stand up for. Um, he's my dad and it is, uh, you know, I know it's a little bit biased, but I can promise you, you won't find a better man of integrity and of honesty and hard work and ethics than Randy Hill. So, I just wanted to put that in.
So, is there any discussion or any on the people that we have here?
Is this the Mike Brown, the, the one that worked with the kids at, at basketball?
So, um, now what we will do is open it up for appointments, if anybody like to, to, uh, open it up for recommendations, we can take that, those recommendations, also close the floor, then we'll vote on any of the ones that was recommended, okay? Any questions on that? All right, so I'll open the floor now, if there's anybody like to open up any recommendations, so, thank you.
I recommend Mr. Chris Williams.
All right, I have a recommendation from Mr. Chris Williams. Any other recommendation?
Mr. Randy Hill.
All right, I have a recommendation from Mr. Randy Hill. Another other recommendation?
Uh, Mr. Brown.
Recommendation for Mr. Brown, so that's all through him, so I guess the motion that we close the recommendation.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McKenna, is that a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lao in favor, uh, opposed? All right, motion, Kirk, so now we have those three, so what we'll do, uh, we'll call the roll and you will, after Mr. Clerk, call the roll, you just say who you want to vote for. All right, call the roll, Ms. Clerk.
Mr. Crawford. Mr. Golden.
Mr. Brown.
Ms. Lao.
Mr. Williams.
Mr. McKinney.
Mr. Brown.
Ms. Ray.
Mr. Hill.
Ms. Spinks.
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Woods.
Mr. Hill.
All right, so that's two from Mr. Williams, two from Mr. Hill, three from Mr. Mike Brown. So, with that vote, Mr. Brown will be the recommendation for the, well, I guess Mr. Brown will be the appointment for our new council position here. All right, let, we'll carry on that, so we'll send this out to Mr. Brown, I'll get him. Alright, let we carry on that. So we'll send this out to Mr. Brown. I'll get him. He'll have to come in, do the oath of office and do all this stuff and he'll be here now. In the next council meeting. Alright, thank you, everyone that uh put their name in the hat to serve. I really appreciate it and we will uh be here back here at this position uh in January. Mr. Crawford uh will be moving out of his district in January, so we'll be back in this seat here again to replace uh Mr. Crawford's position. So I'd encourage the two um that applied this time and like from way this this here is, if we, if you, the council does not want to open it up and just take these two, we can do that, but I'll leave that up to the council when we go with the next uh next meeting once Mr. Crawford has moved out of his district, okay? Alright, moving on to the next item, uh Resolution twenty-two eleven, authorizing me to accept the transfer of one point two, well, one million, two hundred and fifty thousand nine nine hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty cents from Hardeman County to be used for water. Waste water according to T D A C and A R P guidelines. What this resolution is, we have to have this passed to get those funds from A for the American Rescue Plan uh for wastewater and water treatment. Southwest is doing the application. It's a joint application through the county. The city has to have that resolution to accept those funds. Once we accept them from the county, then we will be overseeing that through the uh through our utility department with uh Mr. Clerk. Any question on this resolution? Do I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two eleven?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McKenna is our second, second by Mr. Golden. If you will cash your votes. Alright, motion carried. Next is Resolution twenty-two twelve, authorize the city of all five departments to submit an application for the property conservation match and grant. Uh in order to get this grant, it's from public, public entities and partners. We just have to have this resolution approved, uh saying that we can apply for it.
So moved.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-two twelve, motion by Ms. Spinks. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McKenna, if you will cash your votes. Motion carried. Next is Resolution twenty-two thirteen, award of the twenty twenty-one C D B G Sewer System Improvement uh contract with Quinn Construction. They were the low bid for this project. I'll just name off like these three bids. Uh Quinn Construction was bidded at two, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Arjones Underground was three hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and Rebel Construction was five hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-four dollars. Uh so the utility department, sewer department would like us to approve the low bid with Quinn Construction to complete the C D B G grant for this year.
And this is where Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development is uh approving the funds for three hundred and sixty-one thousand. Is that correct?
It's, I don't know the match yet. That's the full amount, but it's.
That's full amount, three hundred and sixty-one thousand.
So we, whatever the difference, let it be our match, but yes, it's through T D A C. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two thirteen?
I I have a question.
Okay.
Um you said something about the city of Bolivar is gonna be doing a matching, matching it. Do we know how much the city of Bolivar is gonna be matching?
Yeah, hold on, I can do the math.
Is it three hundred and six one thousand?
The total grant, the total grant is three.
Six to one.
Yeah, and then the low bid is two eight or seven.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So seven four thousand.
Okay, thank you. Is that in the budget?
Yes, it's come out the uh sewer department.
Okay.
Go utility.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion. We'll approve the Resolution number twenty twenty-two dash thirteen.
Alright, I have a motion by Mr. McKenna.
So, I'll say it.
Second by Ms. Spinks. If you will cash your votes. Motion carried. Alright, anybody on community development?
Uh yes, we have one, Miss Caroline Miller.
Miss Miller?
No, I guess maybe.
Would you please step down?
I have a question. I guess maybe this, what is this neighborhood? Maybe that might be what I wanna hear about, the neighbor pub?
The neighborhood.
What is that? I I missed that. Could you briefly just go over it real quick?
Sure, that's what your community development.
Well, I think is it, if it has something to do with kids, what I wanted to talk about is, you know, if this might be the answer to the question, what are we doing about our kids? Do we have, do we have anything in the works for them? That's what, that's what I wanna know.
Okay, well, I'll answer your question about the neighborhood. Neighborhood is, I don't know if you're familiar with the old literacy council building on Hope Street?
I do. My mother used to be in there.
Okay, well, that building has sort of, that the literacy council has become sort of defunct organization and that building was not really getting any use out of it. It was just there. Uh the way it was set up, when the city, when that entity stopped operating, that building reverted back to the city of Bolivar. Uh so that started, that process started about a year or two ago. Well, probably been longer than that, maybe three years ago. So what we done, uh came up, we we have a lot of nonprofits and a lot of different organizations that have multiple different uses, whether it's working with kids or to abuse women, to uh everything for us, whatever that nonprofit may be. They don't actually, a lot of times don't have the funds and the means to make things work. Uh so what we're doing as a, as this body here, I asked this body, the recommended to this body that we take that building and use uh COVID money to upgrade that building and allow those nonprofits and participating nonprofits to use that as a joint facility to give back uh to the community. So it's, I mean, some of those organizations do work with kids. Uh some of them may be loads of fishes, anything. It will be a resource hub, so whatever you need help with, I have multiple people call my office. They may need help with utilities. They may need help getting their record expunged, whatever that is, whatever kind of resource. That will be a location for them to be housed under one roof and the city, we can support all of those entities. So that's our sort of over quick overview.
So nothing really, we're not, we don't have anything really going on for like after school, other than the gym here for kids. You know, I know we had the Boys and Girls Club and I guess that didn't really work out. Have we worked, thinking about another option? Just because we have so many working parents and we know most of these are single mothers and so while they're working these odd shifts, you know, swing shifts and second shifts, not everybody's lucky enough to work an eight to five, Monday through Friday job. So I'm just saying, what are we, what can we do to help support those families, especially with the Blue Oval? That's gonna be another opportunity for people to go and work, but it's still out of our town. And then our kids are kind of left at limbo and that leads to so many other problems as we know. I mean, that's not debatable. We all know that that's it, so. I just feel like that should be a focus, that should be front of mind and we should be always thinking about what can we do to support our kids. And just think about that, please. And I don't know if any of the American Rescue Plan funds, I don't know how they've all been spent or if that's anything that we can spin towards that. I'd also like, I guess, maybe get a breakdown of how much money we got and what we've done with it so far, how much we have left and what are we planning to do with it. I know there was some restrictions as far as I'm concerned, but maybe that is something I could submit a request to the office and get that information.
Yes, ma'am. You come to the office tomorrow, fill out a public records request, we'll give you everything you want.
Okay. Also, um these different positions that have come available, I'm just curious what the salaries are of those. Is that, that's public information, is it?
Add it to the list, we'll fill it out.
Alright, I will do. I'm gonna have a list this time.
Yeah, we'll, we'll catch up. Been gone a while, so. Alright, thank you. Is there a motion we'll adjourn?
No, no, no. Y'all can't have joined yet. I'm I'm not on the community development, but you know, I don't, I don't, I don't go by the rules. Okay, um out of order. I wanted to say to you all, I'm here to answer some of the questions that was asked by Caroline. I'm here to say to you all that I want to propose to the council that I would like to do the teen summit again, Teen Summit twenty twenty-three. We did it back here several years ago. It's one of the most successful entities that we put together. I'm very disappointed with the school system here in Hardeman County. Therefore, I would like to see us uh go uh uh all different races. We work together. We put together a teen summit. We brought people in from gangs to God. We brought them to the school. We had a, it was tremendous. One of the most successful entities that ever came to the county. So I'm here to ask you all to support that alone with, I haven't even brought it to Bill of Bel to Bolivar. I didn't come here to talk, but since, you know, yeah, I was heading in this direction, that is one of the things I would like to do and ask the city to uh sponsor that with us because we gotta do something. We have to save our kids. There are too much violence, too much killing and too many things that we are not uh doing anything to be proactive and we have to get involved. As parents, community leaders, we have to do something. We have to save our kids because they are our leaders. So I'm here to ask you all tonight and to put it on your agenda for maybe next month because I plan to do it, but I wanna do it with the help of the council, uh twenty twenty-three Teen Summit and we wanna make it bigger and better than ever, so. That's what I propose to you all. Do you all have any questions?
No, I'd love to see your proposal, bring it to me. We we support Bill of Bel to Bolivar and we don't write a lot of big checks to that, so.
That's good. That that is correct.
You would agree, right?
I I can't, I can't say nothing, but yes, if we want some more money.
They're gonna put that out there now. A lot of times, a lot of times it don't come out that, you know, but we we do, so I I'm happy to hear you say that, Mr. Brunn. Thank you.
Let me, let me, uh can I?
Sure, go ahead.
Cause I wanna concur with what um Ms. Woods was stated just a while ago, cause I was part of that organization the last time. We attended middle school, high school. I mean, it was a successful uh program. And I support that. Anything like Ms. Caroline Miller was saying, helping the kids, I'm all for that, cause that's what we need to do. And uh so you can count me on board on supporting that.
Anything else? Is there a motion we'll adjourn?
So moved.
Motion got a second. Alright, second by Mr. McKenna.
All in public.
Ah.